I'm ready. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Today is October 27, 2020. This is a special meeting. And for the record, I'm gonna do roll call. Michelle Williams. Here, hi. Thomas Fitting.
He's here.
He's here. Rich Gordon.
Yeah.
Here. Nicole Davidson.
Here.
Mary Salvatore.
Here.
And myself Kirk Scott. And we also have in attendance Mr. Baumback as an alternate.
Hi everybody.
Hi. So. Alright, so.
And Elizabeth Allen is coming in now.
Okay. So we're not seating any other, any alternates tonight. Mr. Gashel is here. Jen is here running the meeting. Sue is here. Recording secretary and ex officio Mr. Salerno.
Is not here.
Is not here. That's okay. And we probably have Mr. Garrity. Representing English Harbor Management and Kristen Clark.
Kristen is not here.
Okay.
Just attorney Garrity.
So. I have a couple of. I got a list of things that I'm just gonna try to run through real quick. Please remember that while I'm muted, we can hear everything that's going on around you. And we can also see things that are going on around you also. Board members and staff will be unmuted during the entire meeting. As required by executive order, everyone must state their name, where they are from prior to speaking. Everybody's been pretty good about that one. During public delegations, I can skip that because I think we're not doing that tonight.
Correct.
And. During each agenda item, only the board, staff and presenters will be unmuted. Only one person can speak at a time. Members and alternates for all motions in the interest of making sure we have a clear record. Where you are going to do a roll call vote. Only hosts are permitted to share screens. And this entire meeting is automatically recorded by Zoom. Okay, so that brings us up to public hearings. Continuation of the application of Kristen T. Clark, P E for English Harbor Asset Management LLC owner. Applicant for a four lot re-subdivision of approximately 3.8 acres of land. Zoned RU40 located at 20 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, East Lime Assessor's Map 40. Forty point zero lot 22 and 23. Okay. There are. Quite a number of new exhibits here. Do we wanna go through the new exhibits?
Mr. Chair, just highlight what they are and what was added to the record. Start with, I think it was, we left off with Exhibit X, which was a letter to yourself dated October 5, 2020. That was received on 10/6/2020. We have Exhibit Y was an email from Attorney Garrity of October 6, 2020, and revised plans of September 23, 2020. Received on 10/6. Exhibit Z, final revised plans of October 19, 2020, Nottingham Hill subdivision. Received 10/22/2020. Exhibit AA, letter dated October 21, 2020, from the applicant to Ledge Light Health District. An electronic copy of revised plans dated October 19, 2020. Exhibit BB is a memo of Victor Benny, Town Engineer, for review of the final revised plan of October 19, 2020. Exhibit C is staff review of W. Mulholland zoning official for review of final revised plans of October 19, 2020. We also received by email today Exhibit DD. It's an email from Barbara Johnston to myself, and she requested the following be read into the record. So if I may, Mr. Chair. From Barbara Johnston, her email address lime1234@yahoo.com. Sent Tuesday, October 27, 2020, at 12:49 PM to Gary Gashel, the subject Public Hearing for English Harbor Asset Management LLC owner, 22 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive. Perin 3.8 plus minus acres. 10/27/2020. Hello, Gary. This above address is and was proposed as a conservation easement to be saved for open space, if I recall it. W as eight to 10 years ago, this property is wet land and given for conservation easement for approval of the large built subdivision called Upper Kensington. The Eastline Land Trust is the owner for this parcel. And as a former board owner on the Eastline Land Trust, I believe it should be, it should not be sold or built on for development of houses, nor allowed to be considered a re-subdivision. Please read the above message at the public hearing listed above and aloud before the close of the public hearing. I am against the approval. Sincerely, Barbara Johnston, email line 1234@yahoo.com. 35C Crest Ave, Diane, Connecticut, 06358.
Gary, I'm gonna interrupt you for just a minute. I had put Barbara's email at the end of the exhibit list as PP. Because I had, we already had other stuff before it, so.
Okay, so that'll be Exhibit PP. I left off on. So Exhibit DD will be the applicant substantive changes response. As you can see, it's on the screen. Exhibit. EE is the applicant's response to Commissioner Baumback's comments. Exhibit FF memo from the applicant regarding open space. Exhibit GG, the applicant's response to staff comments. Both Victor Benny and Mr. Mulholland's. Exhibit HH, the applicant's response to the email of Christine Stahl. Exhibit II, applicant's response to the timeliness of submission. Exhibit JJ, applicant's response to engineering comments of October 25, 2020. Exhibit KK, the applicant's plans of August 31, 2020. Exhibit LL, applicant's rights to cross-examine participants of planning commission. Exhibit NN. I'm sorry, MM is Nottingham Hill subdivision lot line revision of existing lots 19 and 21. And conservation design development, one lot re-subdivision of portions of lots 19 and 21 dated 10/19/2020. Exhibit NN is a conventional plan. Nottingham Hill subdivision for lot re-subdivision of lots 19 and 21 dated 1/29/2020. Exhibit OO, Nottingham Hill subdivision lot line revisions of existing lots 19 and 21 and conservation design development loan lot re-subdivision of portions of lots 19 and 21 dated 10/19/2020. And Exhibit PP was the email I just read from Barbara Johnston. And that is all.
That's a lot of, a lot of material. It seems like there was like five or six things that came in today.
Yes, we, they're primarily going to be, the applicant is here and they can explain what those are in regard to, primarily in response to the public comment. Not so much staff comment. Certainly, they're, like I said, they're here to speak to those, those items. Otherwise, the only outstanding item that we have at the moment is a report from the Ledge Light Health District.
Okay, so.
So I would, at this point, turn it over to the applicant to brief us on the materials submitted. And we can open it up to any further public comment.
All right, let's, let's have, let's get to it. Good evening. Please proceed with. Going through the. Items that were just read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Garrity for English Harbor. Mr. Chairman, I'd indicate that most, those documents were received to staff yesterday. I think they were just getting the opportunity to upload them today. There, there were quite a few in response to staff comments and some of the comments from the neighbors. Let me start by. Refreshing, since it's been a while, everybody's recollection on this. With regard to the application. Lots 19 and 21 of this application are currently approved lots in a conventional subdivision. We applied for a lot line revisions on lot 19 and 21. And initially, at the commencement of the application, we're seeking to create two additional lots for this. With one of those lots being conveyed to the Eastline Land Trust as open space. But we designed the plan initially to show it as a building lot because there were some tax consequences for the client if they could demonstrate prior to conveyance to the land trust that it was a buildable lot. Since then, and based on comments from staff and our review of it, we simplified that matter. We've simply reduced it to a lot line revision for 21 and 29 and added a proposed lot three. So there's only one additional lot being added as part of a subdivision request in this. The other are essentially lot line adjustments of the existing approved lots in that regard. And then, just to avoid some confusion, I think Ms. Johnston's email to you, I'm looking at my notes here as I was taking it down, is incorrectly identifies the open space that is being conveyed to the Eastline Land Trust, which is about 38 acres behind these parcels with two access strips. On the east and the west, if you see me doing this, it's because I'm kinda putting my hands out to the side here to make sure I've got my bearings right. But it would be one on the west that comes in off Upper Kensington, and the other one on the east that comes in off what was the cul-de-sac. That, that's, and the, the app, or the map that she's referring to is in Exhibit FF, which is the larger plan of this that shows land to be conveyed to the land trust. That, that is still. The proposal there, I'm actually working with DEP and sent them up proposed deeds. At, at the end of last week, and there's, there's no change in that. So I want to be clear, we're not, this land that we're talking about tonight is part of an existing subdivision. The land behind it, the open space, is not part of this application. With that said too, I see, and I'm looking at the screen here, I think there are some neighbors here. I just want to reserve my right to cross-examine any of the public if they do speak tonight with regard to that. So where are we? When we met with you the last time, we'd indicated that we had done some additional testing on the site. And we're waiting for approvals from Ledge Light as to the three systems on there. There'd be 100As, with the exception of the subdivision lot. On August 6, or excuse me, August 20th, Ledge Light was on the site to conduct the test pits. The data that you see on page six of the most recent, or page five of the most recent plans is the actual data that Ledge Light compiled and gave to us to submit on the plans. The revised plans were submitted on October 6 with that location data on there. So we had, and, and based on everything we can see with regard to the septic testing that was done and, and the fact that obviously Ledge Light, we dig the holes, Ledge Light conducts the testing and take, records the data. We don't see that there's any negative, nor have we gotten any negative feedback from Ledge Light. And we fully anticipate that they will approve those sub, excuse me, those septic designs. With that said, that obviously gets us to the point tonight where we're up against the clock on this. But. In looking at this, if for some reason we aren't able to extend the hearing, and I know Gary was gonna do some math and we can put, unless you want to interrupt Gary.
Yeah, I actually, I did that calculation. And maybe now is an appropriate time to discuss in terms of the timeline out here. As, as you all know, in the standard court of things, we have 65 days to schedule a public hearing, 35 days to conduct it, and 65 days to render that decision. Obviously with COVID-19 is throwing a wrench in it with the executive orders. That essentially puts and gives us a 90-day extension to almost any portion of that timeframe. Six, five, thirty-five, sixty-five. The application was submitted on March 3, 2020. The public hearing was tentatively scheduled for May 7. Unfortunately, we were unable to hold that. We ended up opening the public hearing on July 27, 2020. So if I apply that. At the beginning, at the onset, COVID time, a portion of those 90 days, that would leave us with 39 COVID days. We opened the public hearing on July 27. We must close it within 35 days, being August 31. However, we've received extension time from the statutory extension time afforded by the applicant of 65 days. We've since September 30 was the expiration of those 65 days. If you apply that the remain. Actually, I'm sorry. Yes, that's not, I believe September, September 30, it brings us to the 65 day of all of our extension time. Add in the additional 39 days. I believe we can go to December 4 with the decision.
What does that do for the public hearing?
That, that is if the commission was desired to leave the public hearing open to receive that report. Now, in regards to that report, I did some research today and I looked up into Fuller. The, the issue being that the staff report, if you will, and I'm referring it to it that way because I think you look at Fuller. They would refer to, after the close of the public hearing. You know, the issue being is can the commission receive information outside of the public hearing? Well, so long as that information isn't new. The section on Fuller was 47. Section 47 for illegal receipt of evidence after the public hearing data from the agency staff. It's a pretty lengthy section, but there's certain applicable sections that I would read, read in. It says here, an administrative agency should not consider evidence submitted after the public hearing is closed without giving opponents an opportunity to inspect and question it and offer evidence in rebuttal. Since rebuttal of post-hearing evidence presents practical problems, the agency should refuse to consider it. If the agency is faced with the situation of needing additional data to decide the application and does not want to deny it for that reason, it can extend or continue the hearing to a later date, provided the extension complies with the statutory time limits. However, it should not extend the hearing solely for the limited purpose of submission of additional comments on the application or allow them at a, a decision-making session of the agency after the public hearing is closed. Illegal receipt and consideration of evidence submitted after the public hearing by the agent can invalidate the action. That is what you need to be aware of. Several cases recognize an exception to the bar to post-hearing evidence where an administrative agency obtains professional assistance in carrying out its responsibilities, which allows it to receive comments after the public hearing from its staff and consultants such as engineers, planners and attorneys. While the courts have been lenient in allowing post-hearing comments from agency consultants, one case points out that the opponents in those cases failed to show a violation of the due process right at administrative hearings to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence or there was no evidence in the record that the post-hearing information had any effect upon the administrative decision. Noting a difference between situations where the consultant made a report based upon evaluation of evidence already in the record and reports based on facts or evidence not previously presented to the agency at or before the public hearing, a review of the applicant's plans and reports by the town's engineer, engineering consultants, which was then relied upon by the agency was proper, where the comments and opinions of the consultant was not based on information outside the record. So my opinion is we have a plan that's been submitted, the latest plan dated 10/19/2020. That's been reviewed by staff and is also currently being reviewed by Ledge Light Health District. Prior to the town contracting with Ledge Light Health District, we had our own in-house sanitarian on staff. And I would submit that in those cases, after the close of those public hearings during that time, that individual was considered town staff and those comments were, would have been accepted by the commission, probably as a matter of course. During my tenure though, we have not had a, I shouldn't say that, I can't recall 100% if we had an in-house, I think we've always contracted with Ledge Light since I've been the town planner. So it's hard for me to say for certain whether or not previous commissions did accept staff comment. I do know from my own professional experience that in staffing other agencies and planning commissions across the state, we've accepted comment from town staff kind of routinely. So that said, I think the commission has two options. One, we can either close the public hearing this evening after we hear the presentation and final comments from the public and the applicant. Or under the auspices of COVID-19 and the executive orders to extend the timeframes, we would have approximately 39 additional days to work with. That's kind of where I believe we're at with, with the timing.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, we don't have an objection to the commission extending the closing date of the hearing, if it's more comfortable with that. I would add to that, that I think even if you close the public hearing tonight and receive the information from Ledge Light, it would satisfy the exemptions under 47-4 because you're not taking comment from Ledge Light. What you're waiting for is to determine whether Ledge Light approves the septic system. The, the septic design and all is in the record, has been for some time. And all you would be doing is essentially checking the box that one of the conditions required for the subdivision on the proposed lot three and the B-100s on lots 19 and 21 have been met. So it's not taking additional comments or advice from them at that point in time. It's just waiting to check the boxing. Okay, now we're in a position to either approve or deny the application. But, you know, again, if, if the commission feels that it's more appropriate to keep the application open, we're certainly comfortable with that as the applicant as well, and we consent to it.
Well. My, my one issue with. With, with, with closing the public hearing without having that report is that. I know, I know you're saying that that wouldn't be any new information, but say for instance, they found it like, they didn't like the, they didn't like your design for the sanitation. Just for instance, I'm not saying they do or don't, but I'm just kind of thinking through a scenario. And then at that point, the public wouldn't have any chance of understanding or asking questions about it, or you wouldn't have any questions and, or wouldn't have a chance to, you know, talk about it on the record. I, I just feel, and this is just my opinion, I don't know how the other other board, commission members feel. I, I would like to see, see that report before moving forward, just myself.
And I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that, as, as is my client. That's fine. You know, don't want to put the commission in a position where they feel uncomfortable about what they, where they may be procedurally. Keeping it open would seem to make sense then.
Okay, and, and then the other thing that I'm, that I'm concerned with right now is the list of items added to the record is getting pretty long. And I'm, I'm feeling like, you know, there's, there's a lot of things in there that we may want to go over on the record. And I just, I don't know, if we don't discuss those tonight, I feel like we're gonna have to discuss those at some point. And I just, I don't want to get into a situation where we have a huge backlog of stuff to discuss. So I guess, I guess I'm feeling mixed about it. About what to do tonight.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, as the public hearing is open, we, we have a good idea of the timing on this and where, where we can go. I think if we just hear from Mr. Garrity on the remainder of those items, if he could, so inclined to explain that to the commission, let the public hear it. I think that would answer a lot of questions that the commission may have.
Right. I think, I think going through some of this stuff now would, would definitely be helpful. And also with keeping in mind that, um, I don't know, my, my thought is that we would extend the public hearing until, you said, uh, December 2?
December 4 would be when we have to close it.
So that would be for the public hearing.
That, that would use up all the 39 remaining days.
And, and December 4. Does anyone know what day of the week that would be? I have, hold on. I have a calendar here too. I'm just trying to see if we can not do.
It's a Friday.
A Friday. We're scheduled for the first anyway, it looks like.
Oh, that's good. Okay, so then, okay, and then we would have, we'll talk to, we'd have November and December. So we could, we could continue the public hearing and, and possibly even get two more. Two more sessions, so to speak.
To remember that your November meeting is the P O C D and that you do have another subdivision application for public hearing on the November meeting.
Busy night.
Yep.
Um. Okay. This will be busy. Yeah, so I think, I think that, um, I think we should discuss whatever items you feel like you want to address tonight while it's still kind of fresh in everyone's collective memory here. So.
So if I, if I may, then what I'll try and do is, is go through the exhibits. If we could, Jen, could you open up Exhibit F? And I'll, and I'll just address the issue, what this application entails. And it's the on Exhibit FF, it is, see if I can pull up the page. Exhibit two on, on Exhibit FF. So if we're looking at. Sorry, Jen. The, the parcel that she is referring to, and this is kind of awkward because I'm looking at my own map here while I'm trying to look at the screen. But you'll see down in the lower bottom of that is the area marked in yellow. The area that is involved in the subdivision is the area just below or to the left of the yellow markings, which identifies the lots. The area that she appears to be referring to is the larger area of the map, part of which is being conveyed to the Eastline Land Trust. And we're, we're in the process of working on that now and hope to frankly conclude that transaction before the end of the year. So I think perhaps that she may have misread what the application entail. It doesn't, it doesn't include that additional land. And we show on this, and this is in our October 26 letter, we show the actual lots in Exhibit 1 that are part of, part of the subdivision. So I just want to clarify that issue. Because I, I think she's mistaken as to what the application entails.
Okay, it's really hard to see exactly where. Gary, are you familiar with, with that area, area that the email is referring to?
Yes, I believe so. I, I would agree with Mr. Gary that I think Ms. Johnson may be mistaken. While she did, you know, recall the area of being preserved as open station in that regard. The parcel, as Mr. Garrity said, in this case, it's to the west, is being preserved as open space. I am knowledgeable of that transaction happening. I don't know when it will happen. I know that was the intent of the landowners here. So I think once this subdivision is approved or finalized, either way, that transaction, like Mr. Gary said, would happen possibly before the end of the year.
Right, and there's lots that we're talking about here. They've always been designated as building lots. They're not like open space.
Correct. So the two lots that are currently being considered for re-subdivision are, are, were previously approved building lots.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question here? If you know. Um, if you don't mind my interrupting. Is it possible that there's some confusion because in this same exhibit in the letter, when we're talking about the conventional plan analysis, it says to create the fourth lot, we would need to eliminate some, if not all of the land to be transferred to the Eastline Land Trust. Is that, is that what we're getting hung up on here? Are you, if, if it were a conventional development?
It's possible.
Point that you were making, Mr. Garrity?
Well, no, so let me, let me, when we, the land that you see, the larger parcel is going to the Eastline Land Trust, regardless, and has absolutely nothing to do with this transaction. When we came in with the four lots, we were going to convey some additional land in the area that's part of this lot line revision slash subdivision. It was an additional half acre. That's been eliminated from this proposal at this point in time because we have, we've satisfied the open space requirement and then some in the original approvals. And so we were, this was some land that we were gonna give to the land trust because it's adjacent to that. But in light of some of the questions and concerns that were raised by neighbors, when we designed it and shrunk it down to just the two. when we designed it and and shrunk it down to just the two lot line revisions and the one lot subdivision, we eliminated that parcel, that half acre that was going to go to the land trust and be attached to the larger parcel because it allowed us a little bit more flexibility to move the houses further away from some of the butters.
Okay, so we have three houses on slightly bigger lots with no additional open space conveyance.
Correct.
Got it.
All right, um, okay, so if I cannot, I'll try and go in chronological order to make life a little bit easier. We have cor- correspondence, which is exhibit Z, which is my letter of August twenty-eighth to the chairman. And essentially, this letter sort of was laying out a bit of the history of this application, how we got started, um, some of the issues that COVID raised in terms of getting responses, et cetera. It it I'll candidly say I was complaining a little bit about what we thought was a a lack of responsiveness on some level, but I understand that. Um, and and we've, subsequent to this letter, I met with um both on August thirty-first with Mr. Mulholland, Benny, Gary, and um uh to discuss some of the issues that they had. There's a memo, we we had received a memo from Mr. Benny dated, I think it was August twenty-eighth as well, wherein he raised a number of issues about questions he had with respect to the plans. The purpose of the meeting on the thirty-first was to go through um the questions that he had to identify them. Essentially, um, most of those questions dealt with whether or not certain things were on the plan, such as references to the CLMP easement, the easement that would be involved in the driveways and the grading of the property, um, all of which we addressed. Uh, Mr. Mulholland had a question regarding the type of application. This is a conservation design uh development. And he was, he raised the question as to whether section twenty-three of the zoning regulations allowed us as an applicant to make a conservation design um application. And um, the way section twenty-three reads is that it says that the commission may, for an application of four or more lots or less than ten acres, require an applicant to uh provide a conservation by design subdivision alternative. We are of the position in the way we read this, and I think Mr. Mulholland is in agreement with that. He was just asking for me to explain my rationale, is that nothing prevents an applicant from coming in with an application from the get-go, doing a conservation by design. It what what this, what the regulation provides is a hook for the commission to say to to say to an applicant, if you've got more than four lots or less than ten acres, we can require you to do this, um, and you'll have no choice in that matter. But if the applicant chooses from the get-go, which is what we've done in this, the revisions, is to say, we're going to do conservation by design, we would have a right to to do so. Um, and I submitted on September first uh a memo to um both Mr. Mulholland and Mr. Benny through Gary. Um, well, actually, I I CC'd it to to all three of them, outlining um what I thought we had discussed in the meeting and what we, what what agreements had been reached, and then subsequent to that date on, I believe it was nine twenty-three, Kristen Clark, my client, submitted plan revisions, including that, and what those included essentially were more detail on the utilities easement, a little bit more detail on the driveway. There is a note, I think it's note seven on the plans um that indicate where in both the town hall in the maps and the land records, the easement language for these driveways could be found because that language, that 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 easement map um has already been recorded uh when this was approved as it as the two lots, and the easement language is in a deed on that and would be, and the deeds would be subject to that. So that that was what that um information uh prompted uh or that meeting prompted it, our response in terms of our analysis of that. And then um actually some plan revisions to incorporate the comments that Mr. Benny had relative saying, not so much that he had issues with it, but put this on the plan, put this on the plan, put that on the plan, which is what we ended up doing at that point in time. Then I mean, going in reverse chronological order. On October twenty-first, uh, there was some quite correspondence back and forth between Mr. Be- excuse me, Mr. Geichel and I regarding um the submission of plans. Um, we had been doing a lot of the plans electronically. Staff raised the question, uh, whether or not we had submitted a the the large-scale original plans with stamps on that. We had some back and forth regard to that. We got those plans to them over the last week or two. We were of the position essentially that if we were doing it electronically based on COVID regulations, that was sufficient, but staff wanted to make sure that the record was complete with the actual full-size plans stamped and sealed on them, and that was all delivered um last week, and that was sort of what the October twenty-first, uh, I'm not sure where, I have to take a look. I got a lot of paperwork in front of me here. Uh, uh, back and forth was, but but that's what um is involved there. That, I I don't think any of those made it in as an exhibit. But so then there is the October fifth letter, I'm looking at the record. That is exhibit XX. Uh, yeah, excuse me, exhibit X. This was my response um to you, Mr. Chairman, regarding Mr. Bomback's um email to uh staff and and to the commission and also to Mr. Um Upton at Inland Wetlands. I'm not sure why that were the case, but we took a significant issue with his comments in there because we felt that um in addition him going actually out to the site uh without a public notice of the meeting, that much of what was in that um uh email that was sent to staff in the commission inaccurately reflected um what was occurring there. We responded to that in the October fifth exhibit X letter. One of the issues in his email indicated that it used to be a wooded lot um at the time, and we submitted some evidence as part of i- in the document that we had indicating that, in fact, the the lot had been cleared or it once already, and there were some earlier pictures showing that, in fact, it it had been cleared. The other issue was that the proposed proposed map showed lots or, excuse me, houses on there that were particularly close to the the neighbors. What I can, what I can say to that is that the original subdivision um map, which is exhibit MM, uh, and we submitted here has outlined in red the existing approval on there, which shows those houses closer to the neighbors than what we're proposing at this point in time. We did this for demonstrative purposes, obviously, to uh indicate that what we're doing here um is conceptual in nature, and um the the uh, Jen, can you pull up MM? So if if we look at MM, the driveways in red and the house locations in red were what was approved um originally a- as part of the subdivision. But what everybody seems to fail to understand is that in addition to these being closer to the neighbor than what we're proposing now, is that both the location of the house and the location of the septic are conceptual for demonstrating the feasibility of being able to construct both the house and the septic and a well on there to meet the zoning regulations. What we're required to do in every, both the original application and the current application demonstrate that we can build the houses on there in a couple of locations, none of which ultimately the the homeowner will and the builder will decide where they go and have to go back and make sure that they they get their building approval and their sign off by leg leg. But as long as we're within the setback requirements, as long as we meet the lot area requirements, as long as we have a septic approval, then essentially, we've met all the regulations that are required. We have for these two lots, the the frontage lots on here. Um, we have the the required amount of frontage. The third proposed lot is going to share the driveway, and under the conservation dev- design subdivision, it is not required to have frontage. The other two are required, and they do have frontage. So that was uh part of the reason to respond to that because we thought there were some misplaced assumptions on there. The other um issue in that letter is uh the size of the houses. Mr. Bomback raised an issue with respect to um the possibility that these houses would be undersized. These houses are uh all shown as twenty-six hundred square feet or or more, and that is what the documents that we attached to that exhibit show um in there, that that these houses conform to essentially every other house i- in the neighborhood. They're all very much similar in size, shape, and and location. Jen, could you bring up exhibit OO, please? OO is the current proposal. Should OO is the demonstrates demonstrates the possibility or other locations of the house and where they are in relation to the uh butters. So you can see from this that the houses could be put in a number of different locations on here, and it also shows that each lot there has what what the lot sizes are for these lots, which are all, again, similar in size to the existing properties out there. So from a standpoint of whether or not this is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, we submit that it it it's absolutely consistent with the the rest of the neighborhood. There and there's no difference. I I point out, too, that one of the comments, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but it's the nature of the beast. One of the comments that somebody made i- in the um pro- one of the prior hearings, I think it was Mrs. Stoll, was that they were concerned that these, this development would devalue their properties. I think she just sold her house for five hundred and fifty uh si- significant amount of money, more more than that. I was looking on on Zillow today to see if I could find it. But six hundred and ninety-five thousand, um, looking at my notes here. So if if anything, the property values uh are are not going to be impacted by these three homes on there. And if we go up into Aberdeen Court on some of this, you'll see other properties that are are built in the same manner, where they have houses on rear lots essentially behind the others. And it doesn't seem to have impacted anything with respect to that. So that that that's sort of the summary of my response to uh Mr. Bomback's uh memo to staff and to the commission with regard to that.
Has that memo been added to the record officially?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then on um October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, um, Mr. Geichel sent me an email with some addition. Well, he sent an email out to staff, to staff, but I think particularly Mr. Benny and Mr. Mulholland, indicating that um if they had any additional comments, they needed to uh get those comments to him uh as quickly as possible by Monday because the public hearing was tonight, and there was a question at the time before Mr. Geichel had done the calculation. We were both sort of on the assumption this might be the last night, not counting COVID uh bonus points, if you want to call them that um for that. Uh, and then on Monday, we received additional comments from both Mr. Mulholland and Mr. Benny here, and to which I responded or my client responded on October twenty-second, um, which is, let's see which exhibit that is. I think that is exhibit D. DD, that's substantive changes. It was an explanation to Mr. Benny. Excuse me, that that was, that was early in the week. I'm I'm, I got, like I said, I've got a lot of different paperwork. On October twenty-second, twenty twenty, Ms. Clark responded to Mr. Benny with um, an explanation as what the changes were. He had asked for a a narrative as to what changes were made to the um plans that were resubmitted based on uh one of the earlier meetings. In that, she laid out what the changes were. She laid out where you would find them on the maps. And and then went into uh calculations of two things in in there that are important. One was why a uh stormwater management uh plan was not required on this or or a waiver was appropriate. In part, if you may recall, uh, and I may be getting my commissions mixed up here, but it um because we were before wetlands with a a similar issue. Even though we're going to three homes on this lot, the impervious surface on the property is being reduced because the original approved plan had two lengthy driveways going to the two houses. What we've done under the conservation design plan is to merge all three driveways into one so that we've reduced the impervious surface and the water runoff significantly in that, and the waiver also comes into play on on the on the proposed lot twenty-three because we're disturbing less than a half acre of uh earth, and under one half acre, you're not required to have a storm management plan. So in the October twenty-second, twenty twenty letter, Ms. Clark uh went to the lens to lay all that out there, doing the math for the showing you how the impervious service was being reduced and how um in essence, we are not disturbing um more than a half acre, which doesn't implicate the um uh stormwater ma- stormwater management plan at that point. Uh, and then also included the backup data and it data on the uh type of design for the septic systems that were going to be used in there. So that's what the um the October twenty-second letter indicates, and it's my understanding that Mr. Benny ha- has agreed to her analysis on that. Now, the October the October twenty-third, twenty twenty memo um is his response i- i- with regard to that information. And I would point out, uh, this is exhibit BB, and it says, as previously requested, the drawing set should be updated, satisfy the provisions, the subdivision regulations, six point two five. That's what's done in the letter of the twenty-fifth and the plans, the waiver of the storm. And so in the way, number two is the waiver of the stormwater management report demonstrates that the water quality of the receiving aquifer, wetland or water course will not be affected and that the proposed development will not cause or exacerbate downstream flooding flooding. The proposed proposed design meets the intent of the stormwater regulations. So that's his memo to uh Mr. Geichel uh as to a follow-up on on that. I then responded to Mr. Mulholland's uh request, which in his memo of the twenty-second uh received by us on the twenty-fifth, and I responded on the twenty-sixth. By attaching some of the exhibits that show the existence of the drive. So there's two responses in there. One is to Mr. The the first part is to Mr. Mulholland. The second part is to Mr. Benny regarding the slopes of the driveways and whether or not the application complies with six point two five. And I'll start with Mr. Mulholland's, and and since I've covered that on some level, um, I I won't belabor it if I can avoid that. But um I went through the requirements for the uh conservation design subdivision and and laid out if one through AE, um, how we comply with that. Two, that we will meet, uh, we anticipate that we meet all the local sanitation and state requirements. And then the analysis of section twenty-three, which I explained earlier in terms of saying that this is permissive. this is permissive as far as the applicant is concerned because nothing prohibits an applicant from coming in with that. And I would point out that actually, the very night this hearing opened, as in construction company, I think that's how they phrase it, had a lot in Darrell's Ridge where he sought a one lot conservation subdivision, dividing an existing subdivided lot into two using the conservation subdivision regulations and conservation design regulations. This is, excuse me, when I was on PNC, that was what we called ours. And it was approved. Then there are my responses to Mr. Benny's comments about the slope where we did the mathematical analysis to indicate that we're in compliance with the town regulations because town regulations require nothing over 15%. And the calculations show that none of these driveways will exceed a slope of 5%. We talked about the lot access, which is 6.25. The only lot that this is applicable to is lot, proposed lot 23 because the other two lots already have the access to the street and proposed lot 23 being in the conservation design may utilize the common driveway for its access and is not required to have frontage. Section B in that letter is that no driveway shall be greater than 15%. I've already indicated to you that we provided the mathematics on that. Section C, that each lot shall have, that all driveway shall be a minimum of 10 feet. There's actually 50 feet there, but the common driveway is wider than 10 feet. And so we meet that requirement that all driveways will be paved with the two minutes concrete from the edge of the street to the edge of the right away. And that is shown on the plans that were revised per his earlier comments in August. And then F, all plans for subdivision or re-subdivision, which show common driveway shall clearly state which lots are sharing the driveway. That's evidenced by the notes on the plan and the drawing indicates in a highlighted area that it's a shared common driveway. And those are the notes that are referred to or the documents that are referred to earlier that are already of record in the town hall, both by way of a map indicating where the easement for the driveway is and that, what the terms and definitions of the easements are. I think what Jen is showing you right now is the Pizalia subdivision.
These were the attachments to your.
Right. So these, this was where, and interestingly with Pizalia, the lot that was being subdivided did not have any frontage on the street. Ours obviously do, and we're using, utilizing that frontage for the third lot that we're asking for approval of. I think the next item on there is Ms. Clark's letter of October 22nd, 2020 to Mr. Benny. No, I'm sorry, I've covered that one already. It's the October 25th letter from Ms. Clark to Mr. Benny. And this does the analysis of with the late, some of the plan revisions explains that, explains that on the 10, 9, 20 plans, and obviously because there were revisions, he's asking, and I understand that he's asking for, show me what's changed. So it makes it easier to review. She points out that the lot 23, proposed lot 23, has a small rain garden on it and provided the mathematics as to how the size of that rain garden was determined and it's consistent with the Yukon Cooperative Extension System Programs Guidelines for Rain Gardens. I would point out that as a result of the new plan, the rain garden that was originally proposed by us and close to Mr. Thomas's property to which he had some concerns has now been removed. And we've redone some of the drainage as a result of that, but there is no rain garden proposed near his property. So hopefully that solves that concern that he had. October, the October 22nd letter from myself to Mr. Geisell, the chairman and Mr. Nickerson is essentially just a letter where we have outlined the timeline on what occurred throughout the process when we receive requests for comments. Simply trying to show that, you know, to the extent that questions or concerns were raised, we tried to respond as promptly as possible, given the circumstances. And I feel that, you know, as staff probably felt between Friday and today, probably responded too promptly because they're inundated with letters responding to a variety of different things Friday and yesterday, but we have tried to be responsive as quickly as best as possible in staff comments. The next item on here is the letter regarding the neighbors' comments. This is the October 25th letter. It is exhibit HH. We took some time to go through those comments because while I understand the concerns that the neighbors may raise, candidly, and this is not intended to be offensive to them, but I, I don't think that they're legitimate concerns for a number of reasons. And I don't mean to be dismissive of them, but and I've often found as an attorney, I find that this is, it's problematic in when people buy property. A lot of times they don't really pay attention to the details on here. In the, the letter from neighbors to the commission, a number of issues were raised about whether or not we could do this, whether or not my clients could modify the lots, et cetera. And in here, we went through essentially the origins of this development with the declaration of covenants and restrictions, all of which are recorded on the land records, but not only that, all of which are referenced in the deeds of any purchaser of a home in here, saying that you take subject to those terms and conditions of that. And in those documents, the original declarant, developer who has assigned those to my client, reserved a number of rights with regard to furthering the development of this and possible changes that would be made down the road. And I may have explained this in a previous meeting, but one of the reasons developers do this is because if you look at a project like this or any other project that's of this size, they take a number of years, in some cases, many years to develop and economic conditions change. And therefore, the developer has to have some flexibility in what he can do with the property. But the developer for itself and its successors retain the rights to modify the lots and develop these. And it's still, the developer still has the right for building approvals on, on new homes in the property. In fact, we approved one probably three or four months ago for a lot elsewhere in the subdivision. But, but those claims that somehow we're doing something untoward, you know, is just simply not correct. And I know what happens. Nothing happens on the property for a long period of time. It sits there vacant. People just assume that's open space. That's going to remain that way. It's not going to impact my property. When in fact, they should have known by looking at their deeds or having your attorney who did the closing, looking at the subdivision maps, that at some point, if everything goes according to plan, these properties will be developed and you will have neighbors sitting right next to you. The houses are all going to be similar in size. Frankly, one of the builders is, it's no secret here is Pizalian Construction and they've done a number of these homes in there. And this, they've built these houses. The fact that these houses are behind somebody else's house isn't a deviation or isn't, isn't a sleight of hand. That, that's what the original subdivision provided for. These were rear lots essentially. So when people purchase their lot, either they've forgotten about those matters that, you know, what was of record or they weren't informed of it at the time, but the developers not to be blamed for that. And that's what we essentially went through attaching the declaration in, in this so that everybody could see clearly what they are. You can see the deeds to the different property owners in here, all of which have the restrictions listed in them. I think there's one homeowner who said their current deed does not, but without belaboring the point of the law, as long as it's in the chain of title for the last 40 years, it's considered in their deed because it would show up when somebody did a title search on there. So that's what the October 25th, 2020 letter is, and that's exhibit HH. Then on October 26th, we submitted a letter to Mr. Geisell that did the analysis of the current proposed application of the conservation design, conservation by design development versus a conventional analysis plan. And give me one second to find the exhibit. It's exhibit NN. Jen, if you could bring that up. So this is a plan that we submitted just for demonstrative purposes, similar to the plans that were submitted, showing how we could locate houses in a number of different locations on the site. What this demonstrates is you look down to the bottom of the map, you'll see a proposed town road. Currently, the developer owns enough access to this to put in a town road. And if they wanted to, they could develop four lots out of this. Instead, we're doing three. And the neighbors would then have a town road next to them instead of a much smaller and less intrusive driveway. So that's the, the purpose of this, and that was the purpose of the October 26th letter to do the conventional plan analysis versus the conservation design. And then also, we have some short paragraph in there on the open space contributions to indicate that we've exceeded what would otherwise be required in terms of open space donation. And, and the, I should point out that this is a requirement of the conservation subdivision, the conventional plan analysis on that. The next letter is the October 26th letter to the chairman. This is just indicating, just turn my page here. Essentially including what I just went through, the, the alternative plans and an aerial photo responding to some of the comments that the lot had not been cleared. If we look, Jen, if this, let me see what exhibit this is. I think this is exhibit, not sure if it's exhibit KK, Jen. It's the October 26th, 20th letter to but it responds largely to Mr. Baumbach's letter because we were looking at the photograph and we don't have to belabor what the photograph shows. It's an aerial indicating that the lot has been cleared. It's exhibit EE, looking at my notes. Jen, if you wouldn't mind bringing that up.
Yep.
Thank you. Sure. No problem. I can't tell what you're doing from here. So it's so if we can scroll down to that. So that, that is what, what the lot looked like. I'm not exactly sure when the photo was taken, but it's, it's an older photo, 2019, I think. If I can read this correctly down here, but you know, again, it indicates that, and I think not sure if this commission has done a sidewalk on this property. But so it's, you know, you can see it's from the town's GIS, but it, when we did the sidewalk with inland wetlands too, the very same issue came up. Some of the neighbors who raised it saying it's, you know, it's mature woods and all that. And it's obvious when you walk the site that's been cut once some time ago. And there's been some regrowth, but it's nothing compared to what the tree canopy that surrounds the lot looks like. And some of this was done in order to obviously allow for test pits and the like and determine whether there was ledge out there, things of that nature. So that is in response to supplemental response in terms of Mr. Baumbach's comments. If I can have a got Mr. Benny's comments. I'm talking to myself a little bit here. I think we've gone through most of that. So I don't know if the commission members have questions or comments with regard to the documents. I know it's a lot, but frankly, in terms of the actual application itself, it, it's more directed at, you know, some of the neighbors' comments, some of the other issues and sort of procedural issues. But if we look at this application as a whole, it's relatively straightforward. Two existing improved lots to which we're seeking to modify the lot line. And then a third lot that we're asking for a conservation design subdivision approval on the process. And if, in that case, it gets rather straightforward in terms of the review that's required to find an approval. So with that, all their comments or questions in the commission, I'm happy to take any.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Sure.
Commission members, does anyone have any questions they'd like to bring forward? Okay, I'm hearing silence, so I'm taking that as a no. Gary, should we allow the public to respond to that also tonight?
Yeah, the public hearing is open, so I would think it would be appropriate to give that opportunity to speak if they're so inclined, if they wish.
Members of the public that are on the line, if you would like an opportunity to speak.
Get the site here and thing with this.
I have two people on here. I have Stephen Thomas and I have a Kate Hewitt. If either of you would like to speak, I would say go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thanks.
I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then Kate.
I'm all set too. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, those are the only two members of the public that I have. So.
Okay, so the one, one question that I have is regarding the waiver of the stormwater, weather, stormwater management report. Did, is that was that a written request for that waiver or?
Yes. I think it was through one of the letters from Kristen Clark.
Okay, so we have that on the record. Okay. And that dealt with the the formula and math related to how much earth was being moved around? Is that the justification for it?
No. So, so the, right, it basically, let me so it, under section 5.2G of the subdivision regulations, it wouldn't be required. It would be exempt, but it, under the regulations, I'm just trying to find the section here. Because, because it's, it's under the threshold level on that.
Gary, do you have those handy?
I do. I'm looking that up right now as well. H43, Gary? Of the subdivision, assuming yours are the same. 43 puts me on erosion control.
There is section of. Section five dash two dash two E requires a stormwater management plan, but then in section six, I believe, under. Design. Action six dash eight dash seven are exemptions. Subdivisions consisting of three lots or less may request waivers in accordance with section four dash thirteen. The specific sections of six dash sixteen with the approval of the planning commission provided all the following conditions are met. One, the applicant can demonstrate that the water quality of the receiving aquifer, wetland or water course is not personally affected. And two, the proposed development will not cause or exacerbate downstream flooding. I believe one was addressed with the determination by the Wetland Agency. And number two was determined by the town engineers review and exhibited in his last memo. It meets the stormwater requirements.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I I mean, I thought you were saying erosion sediment. So I that was when I said five point two five G. What I was referring to, which which it's exempt, but you're right. Mr. Benny's letter indicated that stormwater management wasn't required. That was item two in his response the other day.
All right, so. Any other commission members have any questions or comments? And we've allowed the public an opportunity to speak. Um, do we? Do we have a sense of when the report from Ledgley is going to come back?
I think it's eminent. I mean. I did not speak to Daniel today. I know our staff did. Up out in the field, but I suspect within hopefully the next week or so, we would we would have that response.
I'm just trying to think of. What? Procedurally, do we need a motion or anything to continue the public hearing, or can we just say that's what we?
Procedurally, I think I would with and just note that it's we're invoking part of the ninety day COVID nineteen.
I think you would need to set a date, Gary.
Pardon?
I think you would need to set a date.
To which to continue the hearing too.
Yeah.
Right. I would suspect that would be either our next regular scheduled meeting, which is November tenth. Or the December was it first or second?
First.
I think a motion would would that at least notes the fact that there is a ninety days that the commission is utilizing as a result of COVID nineteen in the executive orders. By the governor. At least. At least my discussion of it here. At least we know where where this application is going as far as the timing and why.
Right. I'm trying to think about our next meeting. On the tenth, we have. We're presenting the P O C D.
What what I would suggest and what's typically. Done is upon the close of the public hearing, the commission typically the direct staff to draft a resolution. So I would anticipate that. That would happen. So the mere fact that we're having a public hearing just to accept basically one piece of letter. It that's that's fine. We can do it. Have virtually no discussion. But again, if the public shows up, we have to let them speak. So those are some of the concerns that you, you know, you need to consider. But again, public hearing is open. If we're going to continue it, we let them speak. And I don't, you know, doesn't sound like there was that much interest this evening. I know the previous meetings we had more interest.
I know I I know I mentioned the date several several times last time when we were. Mentioned for people to attend this one too. Okay, so. The motion could sound something like. Move to. Continue the public hearing to our next regular. Meeting. On November tenth. Invoking our. Ninety day COVID extension. Right? Something like that.
Allotted by the, I would say the. Yeah, I would say that that we're. Utilizing additional time allotted by the executive orders for COVID nineteen. Now, if that sounds good or bad.
Anybody, any of the commission members feel like they are willing to take a crack at the. At a motion like that?
Can do that. Um, I would move that we continue this public hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting of November tenth, twenty twenty. And by doing so, we are utilizing remaining days left in the executive order. Precipitated by COVID nineteen to allow ninety day extensions on applications of this nature.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
That was Mary Ann.
Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'm gonna just jump to a vote. So I'm just gonna vote by roll call. Michelle Williams.
Hi.
Thomas Fitting.
Hi.
Richard Gordon.
Hi.
Nicole Davidson.
Hi.
Mary Salvatore.
Hi.
And hi, Kirk Scott. Okay, so let the record show that we are continuing this to November ninth.
Mr. Chairman, just to the point where I I'm I will I'll submit a letter. I know I said it consent at the beginning, but I think. Statutorily, we still need to give you a letter in writing saying we consented to the extension, and I'll do that first thing in the morning since I can't do it tonight.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Did I do you say November ninth? Or November tenth?
The motion had the tenth.
Yep. Just want to be clear.
Okay. So that, all right, thank you, Mr. Gary. Thank you for members of the public that were here for that. We are gonna move on to the next item. On our agenda. Thank you. Which is a. Just a zoning referral. Item A petition of Paz and Construction LLC to rezone twenty point two four acres from. RU eighty slash RU forty, its existing zoning designation to affordable housing district. And for approval of a preliminary site plan, which propose proposes eighty. Unit multifamily affordable residential housing development designated as Brookside Apartments for. Property identified on the westerly side of North Bradbrook Road. In East Lime, East Lime Assessor's Map. Zero nine point zero lot thirty seven dash two pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes. Section eight dash thirty G. So.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I think we left off the last meeting where I was going to generate a reporter memo, which I I have. I don't know if Jen, you were able to get that uploaded or not today.
I did.
You could share that. It beats me reading it into the. But. Essentially, I and I reviewed the plan, the proposed change. I think it's important. To start with noting that the the proposed application. Doesn't actually propose to change the underlying zoning district. The application had been submitted under section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Which does not require an application for a zone change to be submitted. However, the application has been referred to the planning commission by the zoning commission for review of the propos of a proposed zone change at the above referenced site. Which was on North Bridebrook Road. So it's just important to to note that as I begin reading through this this letter. So on page one, just a couple of comments that I had. That the two thousand nine plan recommends when planning for the location of future multifamily housing areas. That it have easy accessibility to shopping and business centers and be located near bus routes. While public transportation, a bus route is not available along North Pride Brook Road, the proposed location is approximately one mile from Route one fifty six and the I ninety five Rocky Connector. So from that perspective, it would appear that a proposed zone change. Would would achieve the goal of providing, you know, multifamily type housing within a currently zoned rural residential district. In this case, the the area zoned are RU eighty and RU forty. There's a. If you look at the zoning map along the roadside, there's an area that zoned RU eighty and extends about two hundred feet off of the road. And then the remainder of the lot is zoned RU forty. I'd also note that. The number two, the proposed change to an affordable housing zoning district would not promote an additional variety of housing to the residential inventory near the village centers. P O C D again recommends permitting multifamily housing in designated growth areas when such development is used to combat housing sprawl to rural areas of town. And consideration should be given for the following characteristics of development. That's on the next page. However, I did note that. An affordable conservation design development of single family subdivision versus an affordable multifamily development would be more in keeping with the underlying RU forty zoning district. As it would provide affordable, single family detached dwelling units on an individual parcels of land, characteristics of the existing land use pattern in the immediate area. So then follows some, if you scroll down, Jen, I've got some additional findings. Objective one point one of the P O C D to maintain the traditional knowing and character and community and enhance village identities of East Lime. I indicated that the proposed property is not located within the Nianic or Flanders Villas District. In addition, the application proposes eighty units comprised of two to three bedrooms each. Sorry, eighty, yes, eighty units comprised of each. As such, the proposed zone change to permit the proposed site development does not appear to. Encourage single family and two family dwellings or small scale mixed use or senior housing in the Villas District. Section thirty two of the slime zoning reg states wherever possible, the district shall be located in proximity to existing commercial districts and. Or along a public transportation route. The proposed application proposes to rezone the existing RU eighty RU forty zoning district to an A H D along North Bridebrook Road. Which is in proximity to a major public transportation route Interstate ninety five in Connecticut Route one fifty six. So in that regard, a proposed zone change to permit the proposed site development did not appear to be inconsistent. With objective one point one from that perspective. In regards to mixed use and affordable housing. As we.
I think we lost Gary.
Let's just give him a minute to see if he can get back on.
Yeah.
So give us a moment to read this over. Do you want to zoom in just a little bit?
Thank you. Okay, Gary said that his computer died. He said if you could read while he's rebooting. Let me know when you're ready for me to scroll down.
Jen, the one I clicked on on the website, I think maybe. One for.
There were two items posted on the website. One was Gary's response to Bill for the planning director. This is the one he wrote today for you guys.
Got it. Thank you.
Is there only one page to this?
No. That's that's the end of it, though.
Oh, okay.
It says that it's five pages, but it's really only four. And he had already read up to that point, so. I can't show you. The plan.
Yeah, let's.
Eight units, huh?
Let me move this a little bit.
So that there's gonna be three or four of these?
Um, there's quite a few buildings.
Lot of buildings, eighty units.
Yeah. These are just the elevation.
There's no city water, nothing up there either.
Yeah, there's water and sewer.
Oh, there is, or? Okay.
Yep, they have water and sewer.
So you do. All right.
So these are all gonna be like three story condos kind of. Style.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and zoom out of this just a little bit.
Mr. Chair, I'm back. Did, were you able to get through the memo?
Yeah, we we read the memo. We were. Kind of just reviewing the plan, as it were. I don't know if you wanted to kind of jump jump back in and and explain or or give us some background or anything. Or discuss the memo anymore.
I I mean, I I think the memo is pretty straightforward. I would note that, you know, we we obviously see that there's a need to promote this type of housing in our downtown and, you know, to. Just really strengthen them and strengthen the village center. This site's location is clearly not within our downtowns, be it Flanders Village or Nianic. I I would note that. In our regulations or in in our affordable housing plan, and it's recommended that we find what they call easy access to streets. I mean, obviously, this has a clear, easy access to North Bridebrook Road, which is considered a collector. Road and it leads to what we would call an arterial road, Route one fifty six. And then from there, it's within. Several thousand feet of the I ninety five internet interstate connect rocky neck connector. That's basically its location relative to any transportation. That's available publicly. So essentially, it's more of a transit oriented development. It it requires a car to to access jobs and shopping. I mean, you certainly could walk, but there's no sidewalk along Route one fifty six. There's no existing sidewalk along North Bridebrook Road either. I would note again that the existing underlying zoning district district is residential versus. The number of applications we've seen being proposed in our industrial or commercial zones. So that is. Because. We're not losing commercial industrial space to residential development in in this particular case. And again, you know, P O C D recommended to set up housing zones, which the zoning commission adopted. This site is not located in any of those. I think, you know, overall, in, in, in regards to the location, I mean, it's not necessarily consistent with the P O C D, but it's not terribly inconsistent either. But again, there's no public bus route. So you, you could find it consistent or inconsistent, certainly. I would note the, you know, the existing characteristics of the land, it's, you know, this is relatively flat until it slopes off until the kind of a ravine and that, that stream in the back of the lot, and then it goes, rises up again to the highway. Across the street, North Bribrook Road is the state property which houses both York and Gates prisons, the correctional institutions. And I think in our last meeting, I, I did note the number of houses to the north and south of the site as well. I can't remember those off the top of my head.
So it's wetlands behind it? Is that what's behind there?
Yeah, so if you note that it's kind of a, call it a dash line, it's relatively thick, and you'll see toward the, the top of the page, it says 100-foot U R A, and it shows from one of the wetland flags to that thick line. So where the cursor is now, that's the stream, and the wetland boundary is the thin line. And then the upland review area extends on both sides of the stream out 100 feet.
What is the dash, that, dash line that's to the north of?
So you'll note those dark, darker lines, you'll see that there's a 73E. I believe those darker lines should be rep, uh, there's some, they're dark gray lines, and I believe they represent the soils, the site, the soils that are on the site. There's a number corresponding with each of them, and they're grayed out, and then I'd have to look a little closer at the plan.
I was talking more to the right and.
So there's a, what, what looks like a limit of proposed tree clearing?
Okay.
Uh, I, that, but that's not the dark line. That's, that's where Jen's got the cursor now. So that's the limited tree clearing. I think those dark lines, if you look, it says phase one and phase two. So I believe those are phase lines.
Okay.
Yes.
And then there's another one, it's like a rounded.
Yep, so that rounded one, I believe, should be representing the sewer shed. So that portion is outside of the sewer district. Thus, you'll know all the buildings are on the other side of it to, so that they fall within the sewer district, so they can connect to the sewer system. I would note that the applicant has received allocation from the sewer and water, water sewer commission for this project.
So there's no wetland issues, they have sewer access. They have, they don't really have public transportation per se, but they have transportation via collectors and and major arteries and roads.
They provide a primary entrance and a secondary means of ingress and egress to the south. I've reviewed the plan a, a little more thoroughly in terms of the application pending before the zoning commission and the site, for the site plan approval. And discussing it with the town engineer, the stormwater retention has been designed to the, from the two to 100-year storm. So from that perspective, there should be virtually zero runoff from the site.
And how many of these units are actually going to be affordable? Are they all?
Yeah.
I was going to ask that too.
The, the whole development is called an affordable housing. I believe it's, there's a percentage, there's 80 units.
Let's, let's, let's consider them out for affordable.
Yep, it's outlined in one of our exhibits that we looked at last time.
Yeah, there, there's an affordable housing plan. So the unit shall be designated and restricted as affordable for 40 years. They have two types, type A and type B, type C. So, and I'll just read the. There's two affordable type A units and two affordable type B units, four affordable type C units. For and I believe there's a total, it'll be a total of 18 total units in the committee are built and offered for rent. Five years, there's a five-year build-out anticipated.
Just to get some context about like what, they're going to rent these? Or, are they selling them as condominiums or?
They'll be rentals.
And so what is, what is an affordable rent?
So we have that in here. If we want to pull up the, from our materials today zoning referral, North Bribrook Road, Brookshead Apartments, 830 G PDF. It's like the third to last thing on the list. This was what we were looking at last time and why I had asked if we could continue this item to today so that I could have time to digest it. But it goes through the, there's 24 total affordable units, and it goes through how they're calculating the rent based on market rate. So the rent of the 24 units varies by unit. But they can go up to $1,451 a month.
That's affordable.
So the math is there. I mean, I think that we've, we've come to this a lot. This was kind of my concern and why I wanted to have time to walk through these documents in between meetings. You know, it obviously meets the statutory requirements for affordability in East Line because it's based off of median income. And the median income here is high. So, you know, they're technically affordable, but I don't know that they're accomplishing the spirit of our want for even more affordable housing, but that's a, not specifically related to this application, so.
Yeah, that gets into a pretty quintessential or very, very deep conversation about affordability.
Yeah.
I think that, that kind of goes beyond this.
Absolutely, but I'm glad that, that we have that recommendation in the P O C D to put an affordable housing subcommittee or task force or something on this so that we can get you know, a better handle on it townwide, but unrelated to this particular application.
Uh, anybody, any other commission members have any questions or comments?
This is rich. Was there a traffic, there was traffic study completed, I think, right?
Yes, there was, but it was not provided to us for review.
Okay. Thank you.
How far is this from 156 again?
Approximately a mile. I think it's less than a mile as the crow flies. So if you just did a radius from 156, it'd be less than that. But based on the distance you have to travel down the road, it's, it's about a mile.
Thank you.
Three miles from Niannick, the center of Niannick, roughly the train tracks where I measured from.
I think we do have the traffic study.
Is it in there?
Yeah, it's in this.
It's in the massive document.
That's 252 pages.
Yeah.
I think my suggestion would be, I mean, if you go to that study, you would just look to see what the level of service is currently on North Bribrook, which I believe it would be an A. And, and then what it would drop to based on this development. If I recall correctly, I, I don't think it changes a whole lot. It might drop to a B. But I don't know that 80 units would generate that traffic, enough traffic to drop the the level of service on the road based on its current design. And the, the nearest stop sign is relatively far from the, the driveway entrance, so I don't know that that would be much of a concern, but I'd have to look at it to make that determination.
Did I hear you correctly? You said there's 80 units and there's only 18 that are going to be affordable out of 80? 24. 24. I believe it's 30% according to this.
Yep, okay.
So, so the affordable one is the 1,400.
Correct.
And, and so the, the, the I won't say unaffordable, I'll, I'll say the more likely rent is going to be probably like 18.
Market rate, yeah.
Warranty rate's like two grand or better, I think.
So it goes through the math, the most they can charge for the affordable one right now with the town's median income level is 1,451 monthly. But it's the prices vary by unit in the table.
This is the traffic study.
I know I asked this the last time. Now we're not really, there, this, this are we, what, what is our charge here again? Because that was kind of a little confusing for me last time. It's like, we're doing this, but it's not a referral, like they're not actually going for the change of the zoning.
Correct, so the, the applicant has made application to the town under the statute 8-30G.
Right.
Uh, which doesn't require an applicant to submit an application for a zone change. However, if the zoning commission, and, and Mr. Attorney Heller's correspondence to the zoning commission is he indicated that if the zoning commission felt so inclined, and I, apparently it does, they would submit an application for such a change, but they, they, they're still holding to their submittal saying they don't have to. So currently, they have not made application for a zone change. That said, the, the zoning commission has treated the application submitted to them just as if it included a zone change. As we've held historically with every affordable housing application, that it requires a zone change to go from the underlying zone to affordable, the affordable housing district. And then the zoning commission also has to approve a site plan. So there's two actions that that agency has to make, and as a result, we get the referral for the, the, the change of zone. So under that scenario, our charge would be to determine whether or not the change of zone would be consistent or inconsistent with the plan of conservation development. That's currently active.
Okay.
And I think, you know, that while there's aspects of the proposal that are consistent, I, I think my opinion is overall, it's, it's more inconsistent than it is consistent.
Yeah, based on the traffic and.
Well, one, yeah, there's no bus route directly in front of the site. It's not located in either of the village centers, you know, where, where the densities are much higher. You know, so those are two big shortcomings, I think, that our plan of development kind of hammers on and is, you know, so while it doesn't meet those things, it, it it does lend itself to being close to the highway. So that's kind of what it's got going for it, and the fact that there's a correctional institution directly across the street. Which provides substantial open space between it and the development. So there, there's not a lot of people to, you know, be opposed, if you will. But I don't think that it'll have significant impact on that, those facilities.
Alright. So, does anyone have any thoughts about whether they feel this is consistent or inconsistent? We've kind of pretty much just stuck to gathering facts. Does anyone, I mean, we, we've, we've heard the staff comments and we've seen the the plans. Does anyone want to have the discussion about whether it, whether it does, whether it's consistent or inconsistent?
It's not really an, an ideal location, I guess, but I wouldn't say it's totally inconsistent based on the track, the location and the the, the other, the, you know, the other sewer issues, whatever. I think that's the only concern I would have, and I guess that not being a public transportation might be, might be a minor concern, I guess.
Yeah, that is a concern. My concern with this is so they're calling it affordable housing, but it's not near any bus routes.
Well.
And it's not near any town center to, to, you know, support the town, and it's not in any of our zones where we would prefer it to be. What, what is, when, when? Now, this is just regular RU-40 and RU-80 here.
Right.
If, if we, if, if they were not coming in as an 830G with this, would they be able to build the same kind of apartment complex as it is?
So, um, they, they could apply under SU and change the zone to a special use district and apply for a multifamily housing development. That's one way to go about doing that. Again, that requires a zone change. I also, if maybe possible, I, I just pulled up the zoning map. So now I'm, I'm going to note that Sea Spray Condominiums, which is an affordable housing district, is approximately 1,000 feet as the crow flies from the rear property line to this site. I'd also note that the large tract of land, uh, it's now been, I believe, deeded to the state of Connecticut, which was a part of, possibly part of the, the Freedom, the Sea Spray condos, uh, is also zoned AHD. Ex, with the exception of its frontage, good portion of which is roughly 400 feet off the road, zoned RU-80. I'd be happy to share my screen or.
You, Gary, share screen is on. You can, you should be able to share.
Yeah.
I think.
Yep.
Gary, Sea Spray has sidewalks down to 156.
Yeah, so you guys can see that. So the site is where my cursor is here. This is the condominiums that Sea Spray, Freedom Way. And then there's large piece which was zoned, I think, as part of that. When it got approved, they included that land, I, I suspect. So I think, you know, again, the, the transportation issue being that there's no, you know, public bus route there. Uh, there's no public bus route either to Sea Spray as far as I, I know.
So the one that we're talking about, the AHD? That's the one we're talking about.
No.
I just, this is the site, that's the subject site. There it is.
And then eight, oh, so it's basically next door to an affordable housing district.
Correct. That's, that's, I'm trying to get it, so here we go.
I, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only difference is the one that's already approved, AHD already has sidewalks down to 156.
But there's no connection from this development to that one, so they wouldn't utilize that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Are they? Oh, is there, is there a requirement to put sidewalks there?
Along North Bribrook?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't believe there's a requirement for it. I do know that as, as planning and zoning commissions, we, we've learned that over time, we we're no longer able to require developers to make off-site improvements. So they can make the, they can put a sidewalk in along North Bribrook Road on their property and then say deed that to the town as a public improvement. But I think in, in regards to, you know, transportation planning, we, we didn't really have any plans for sidewalks along North Bribrook Road. We did contemplate a bike lane. It's a heavy, it is heavily traveled by bikers. I travel it nearly daily to and from work, so. It's a heavy, it is heavily traveled by bikers. I travel it nearly daily to and from work, so.
So what is, I'm just, I'm still just trying to get some context about. It's basically next door to the, to an existing affordable housing area.
District.
Yeah, what is on, what is in there now?
Nothing. This is a vacant piece of land owned by the state of Connecticut, this this piece here.
Okay, that's the one that's owned by the
And as I zoom in, I'm going to turn, you'll you'll see the the property lines here. There's this existing house, that's its own lot. And then you'll you'll see these two lines. This is a separate piece and parcel. And I'm going to zoom out and it wraps, I zoomed too far out, and it wraps around, kind of, you can see it there, but it comes all the way up and it wraps around this thing.
I see that.
Kind of bizarre, but so there is some, there is a parcel that separates it from the a, the existing affordable housing district.
Which, if it's owned by the state, it's not even really an affordable housing district.
Is it? I, I think it's primarily open space. I don't know if there's any deed restrictions on it. I'd have to look all that up. I don't know off the top of my head. Bill Mahala may remember. I did at the bottom of my menu, men, the menu, my memo, I did provide some draft language to at least start a motion.
Right.
And in a direction that way. I would also note any lack of response by the agency would, it could be deemed as kind of a favorable response by the zoning commission.
We do have the option to find that it is not consistent or inconsistent, correct?
You could, yeah. I mean, ideally, if we can take a stronger position one way or the other, it makes it more clear, but
Right.
Either way, you know, you're right. You can say, hey, it's consistent in this way, inconsistent in that way.
Well, okay, so to to continue with her idea. Now, say, say that, say that we do not find it consistent or inconsistent. Then, then what is the impact to the zoning board? Like, this is a zoning referral. Say we, we don't make that, we, we just say it's it's neither consistent nor inconsistent. Then what is, what is, do we have to have a a majority vote or, do they have to have a majority vote for, for the thing, or what is the impact of, of doing that?
Okay, let me get to that. All right, here's the findings of consistency, the regulations. This is the statute. So at the last sentence here, a proposal disapproved by the planning commission may be adopted by the zoning commission by a vote of not less than two thirds of all the members of the zoning commission. So what that would mean is they would need a majority. Based on their makeup, they need the majority anyway to pass any resolution. So in that regard, it's a bit of a mute point.
Okay, well.
But I do believe they, they do look at every referral we send them. They do note the vote. That's been reported to me, so I think it is important to to respond.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should respond. I mean, we talked, we've spent a lot of time trying to understand exactly what this, this is. So I feel like, feel like we should be able to come up with an opinion. My thoughts are, I mean, it, it is like directly next to something that was designated as a affordable housing district. And I don't know, there's not a lot of neighbors around there. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm somewhat ambivalent really about whether or not this thing goes through. I don't have any strong feelings that it's not consistent or that it is consistent. That's just my thought. Does anyone else have any other? Because, I mean, it is right next to an existing one. That would be a a point in its favor.
But that existing one, I would say, Kirk, that was proposed in what was previously zoned light industrial. And we've seen historically, we lose our light industrial primarily and our commercial areas to these multifamily developments.
Right. Well, okay, to that, to that point, then would it, would, would would, would satisfying some of that demand take the pressure off of our other light industrial areas?
Possibly. I, I think at the end of the day, we're still, we're just subject to eight thirty G because our affordable housing stock is less than ten percent. And I'm, I'm not necessarily certain we'll ever reach it.
I wouldn't think so either.
Well, and that's the problem with this, right? So, you know, we're being put in a position where we are looking at really dense development in an RU zone where we have identified, you know, regardless of the AHU zone on the state property, which I think shouldn't even be considered because that, that doesn't have anything to do with the P O C D, it's and it's not developed, right? But we're being put in this situation where we, in order to get affordable housing, and we're talking about twenty-four units, we also have to accept fifty market rate units of high density housing in a place that's not zoned for high density housing. And that's not the fault of the developer in this situation. And, and there's nothing that we can really do because this is, with the state regulations, this is completely legit. But I think it just is another, we, we have come into this situation a number of times on this commission in the short time that I've been here. Where we are not able to truly satisfy our affordable housing requirements, or even our affordable housing desires to bring in like actual volumes of truly affordable housing. Because we're just sticking them in, in these other large market rate developments and you know, adding more market rate. While we have the affordable, so we're, we're just chasing that percentage. And, and in the meantime, not really getting you know, the kinds of affordable housing that are useful to people in areas that are most appropriate, and not just the buses, but just, you know, good, easy for people's lives.
I, I'd also know part of that is, is that there, there's a, there's a discrimination issue too that they, they want to address and to say, well, you have to have market rate mixed, affordable mixed in amongst the market rate, so there's no discrimination. So that's, that's another challenge. So you do have to kind of, the way the law is written now is, yeah, you have to take the market rate with the affordable. So you don't just, you know, have these nodes of affordable housing around the town.
And I get that too, but I mean,
Yeah, it's a tough.
That's pretty low.
Really low. Yeah.
So, as I said, you know, my, my overall opinion is it's more inconsistent than it is consistent. Doesn't mean that it won't get approved or it'll get denied. I don't know, but that's kind of how I lean.
All right, anybody else have any other ideas? Anybody feel like they're wanting to take a stab at a motion? Or do we still, are we still making up our minds? Th- th- this is a really tough discussion here. I could be convinced either way. I see both, I see both sides of it.
Sorry, Kirk, there's a message, message from Liz about the our ability to request more affordable housing units on the, on the chat.
I don't know if we have an option to request anything.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
This is, this is, they've provided us a plan. And it either is or it isn't.
Yeah.
This isn't a, this isn't a I mean, I, I agree with that sentiment, but I don't know that even if we did ask or make a comment, I really don't think that they would follow it.
Develop, which is
Can you unmute, Gary?
Did we lose Gary again?
No, I'm here. I was muted. I, I was gonna say, I, I don't Yeah, I don't know that the zoning commission could require them to make more units affordable, but certainly I think we can tell them that hey, it doesn't hurt to ask. And, and then you know, I think like Michelle said, we, we recommended a task force to kind of address this issue with the new P O C D. So as soon as that thing gets, you know, completed and adopted, then that could be, you know, our first course of business. But until then, but certainly we can make those comments to the zoning commission, so they have a better understanding of kind of where we're coming from. Works.
All right, so, do we want to talk about what we still haven't gotten to, I, I feel like we're still trying to say whether or not we, we find it consistent or inconsistent. We, we have a boat, we have arguments towards both. So can, can we bring your memo up again, Gary?
Yep.
I just, oh, thank you, Jennifer. Is that memo on the on the web?
It's on the website, yes.
Is it? Memo to Tom GG Planning Department referral response?
That's it. Oh, she's got it up here.
I have it.
I don't know what it's.
Gary, did you want me to go to a specific portion of the memo?
I believe that we, Kirk wanted to see it. You know, I, I guess number one just kind of points out where, you know, I did say it did provide easy accessibility to shopping and business centers, albeit transit oriented, right? So you have to drive a car. But the access to get to it down North Bribrook Road, one fifty-six is, is, in that perspective, ideal. But again, as you go through the rest of this, I think it just points to, the housing's not being proposed in our village centers. You know, that, that's really the, the biggest thing I could find in terms of it being inconsistent. Otherwise, the underlying zoning is residential, you know, so that's, that's a hard one to argue. In my opinion.
Right, but there's a lot of residential. This is, this is going to be a lot of residential in a very dense area.
Right.
If this was not affordable housing, these units would not be permissible, correct?
You, you'd be, well, you did have to apply for a special use.
Yeah.
And under the SU, so again, zone change. And then the multifamily development. And I don't know if the density under that, tho- those rate, I'd have to look and ask Bill if the density under the multifamily is higher or not.
Okay.
You know, again, I mean, this isn't, to my knowledge, there's nothing here controlling the density other than what can we fit on the site? And then how many of those units have to be affordable based on the total number?
And all the town utilities can take care of it, the water and sewer, that's, that's already
So, yeah, the Water and Sewer Commission has already granted sewer allocation to the development, and I believe they've approved the water as well, authorized it, they've been paying an assessment.
So, did I understand you correctly when we were looking at the, the requirements from the from the zoning board vote having a two-third, is that a two-third majority? Is that going to be required regardless of what we say? They're going to have to have a two-third majority?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, so all right, maybe we, maybe we do maybe we just find it consistent and inconsistent and make a note that we would prefer there to be more of the housing to be designated as affordable. Does that sound like a reasonable approach? Because the, 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 our, our decision is to whether or not we find it or inconsistent, consistent or inconsistent, is somewhat irrelevant because the action on their end of it, they're going to still require the same thing, which is a two-thirds majority to get it through.
Would it be helpful they know why it's not inconsistent, though?
I think, I think that, I think that highlighting our, our reasons that it's inconsistent would be helpful. And I, I would think, maybe if I mean, if we want to say it's inconsistent, we could say it's inconsistent. I'm okay with that. I think we have enough information to say it's inconsistent. It would be consistent from the point of view of, you know, it, it would add to our affordable housing, but I don't know if it is in a meaningful way. It would be eighteen units or something. Is that what we said?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four units.
I, if, I think I threw out the number eighteen initially, but mistakenly reading a total number of a certain type of unit or something.
Okay. I don't know.
I mean, I think if, you know, based on my memo anyway, if you were leaning on it, certainly, as I said, I think it's more inconsistent than consistent. I would, might be more apt to, to, to pass a resolution saying it's inconsistent and noting where it's consistent.
Exactly.
At least that's definitive.
I agree with that. Should be on record why it's inconsistent, that's all.
I could, I could get behind that. So we're going to say inconsistent.
Yeah.
I know, I know you guys were taking really good notes about why. So based, based on Gary's memo, we would, we would pick out a couple of those. I would say one of them being that
proximity to the village.
Yeah.
Presidential, too.
Yeah, it adds a different type of adds a different type of housing stock to that area. Oh, but I don't know if that is, I don't know if that is act, actually
That actually
True.
Yeah, that's consistent.
I think you argue that it provides a variety of housing stock in the, that isn't, that isn't available.
Right. All right.
So I just So I just put those, I I mean, I was gonna type this into a chat, does that, should I do that?
Yeah, I think that would be a good, good uh, we gotta start capturing these, because we can, we can keep going. Um, I think Cap, we we have, we have some really good ideas. I just feel like, I feel like we we need to start uh formalizing them into a motion. So we're we're saying consistent because it provides a a variety of housing stock.
But I just typed in the chat, there's some quick.
Okay.
You know, the the two reasons, and then I would just you could say the commission notes that that the proposal is consistent in that it it has, you know, relatively easy access to North Briarbrook Road and Route one fifty six and the I ninety five Rocky Neck Connector.
Yeah.
Okay, I like that. Uh, do we want to add another bullet on there saying that uh also we feel like there there could be more um, more designated affordable, you know, a higher percentage of the units could be designated as affordable. I don't know if that really holds up or not.
Yeah, I don't know that, I mean, I totally agree that we I mean, that's what I made that point, but I don't know that that um
We'll face it.
He's meeting the state statutes.
Right, it's a business. It's like paying more on your taxes. You don't, you don't give the government more.
And we don't require it, right? So like, it'd be great for for us to, you know, require more, but
All right, I think that, I think that's enough of a um, does anyone else have any more that they would like to add to that?
Zoning's gonna do it there, they're gonna like their mind up.
Yeah, yep.
But we'll have it on record what we feel, that's all.
Right, well, they could, they they could uh listen to the tape too if they're really interested. And I feel that we definitely did discuss this like a lot, so.
I think it's well vetted.
I think so.
So in the in the chat box, I don't know, I I said finds the portions, it's kind of cumbersome wordiness. Uh, so if anybody wants to, maybe say just finds a portion of the proposal consistent. Or
Finds.
Consistent is that it has easy access, maybe just reword that a little bit, but
All right, does somebody want to take a crack at making a motion out of this?
Yeah, I can make a motion. Let me go ahead.
Yes, please, please.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I move to find the proposed referral inconsistent with the two thousand nine P O C D for the following reasons, in that the site lacks public transportation, is not proximal to village center, village centers. Uh, the commission finds the portions of the proposal consistent such that as easy access to North Briarbrook Road, Route one fifty six and the I ninety five Rocky Neck Connector.
Now, do we need, do we need to say like generally inconsistent and emphasize portions are consistent or or?
I I would look for a second and then have discussion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Now we have discussion. Now we would just
Okay, so do we feel that the wording is good the way it is?
I was wondering if we should find it neither consistent nor inconsistent.
You certainly can. I'm recommending to pick one.
Oh, right, but I'm yes.
And just finding it.
That second part.
That's what I was kind of wondering about too, my like when 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 we, when we say it, we should say we find it inconsistent, however, portions are consistent, or or we could say something like we find it inconsistent overall with some portions that are consistent. Does that? No.
I'm not sure why you have to do that. You can point out why things are inconsistent. There's obvious there are things that are consistent. I mean, you can
Right, well, um, I think, I think, so Gary, why, why are we? Why are we wanting to not go with the consistent or inconsistent? Because it, because right now, as the motion reads, I feel like that's what it says is that it's either it's neither consistent or inconsistent.
Correct, I I would concur that that how the motion reads, so I I just added that it would just be found inconsistent for the lack of public transportation and its location is not proximal to the village center.
Okay.
And I would say the commission would know, because we're allowed to provide additional comments. The only part found to be consistent is its access to North Briarbrook Road, Route one fifty six and the I ninety five connector.
Okay.
That's just but you don't even have to say that, you could just say it's inconsistent and leave it at that.
Yeah, that's probably better off.
So if Rich was so inclined to revise his motion, we could get the second again and go that route.
I think he has to, I think that would be up to Rich, because
Correct.
So, Rich.
I'm just adding the last paragraph to it, or?
The only, one, one, one more, one more thing, and I'm sorry if I'm like being uh difficult. What is, why are, why are we being, why are you saying that we should be to uh inconsistent? I guess, I guess I just get, I'm just getting hung up with why we can't be neither consistent nor inconsistent.
You you can be, that's totally this agency commission's choice. Uh, I'm just recommending to pick one of the others, so it's clear.
Okay.
Which way the commission's gonna stand on it. I mean, if in fact the commission is kind of, you know, in limbo in both places, then yeah, say that and and the vote will, I guess, you know, maybe reflect it.
I know for myself, I mean, we're still discussing this, so I can say my opinion. Uh, for myself, I'm like, I feel that it's consistent or inconsistent, and if, and if if everyone else feels that way too, then I think the motion is okay the way it is. Um, but if you guys have a strong opinion about it being one way or the other.
I'm with Kirk on the, I, it's so hard for me to say it's inconsistent because it's adding to the affordable housing stock. However, it is adding to the affordable housing stock in a way completely differently than we have outlined in the P O C D.
Right.
So there's like
Yeah, but isn't that our point to point out what it's not going along with the P O C D?
Right, but the P O C D does state like as an overall goal. You know, and and we, and we know we're not meeting state mandated levels of affordable housing.
Because our statement, our our statement doesn't
So if, I mean, you do have the motion on the floor, we've had some discussion, if you're feeling that that way, I think you could call for a vote and just see if it
Okay, let's
Can we read back the motion just so that I'm crystal clear?
Should I? Um, should I, could the guy put initial pa- uh paragraph there, is that should I add that to the uh motion or is it, or is it kind of a?
Well, it
E- e- either or, that the motion you
Kind of saying the same thing, right?
Do you want Sue to read back the motion that was made?
I would love that.
Yes.
You want me to read it?
Please.
Okay, move to find the proposed referral inconsistent with the two thousand nine P O C D for the following reasons, in that the site lacks public transportation and is not proximal to the village centers. The commission finds the portions of the proposal consistent such that it has easy access to North Briarbrook Road, Route one fifty six and the I ninety five Rocky Neck Connector.
Maybe I should just say find a portion, but
Say what, where again?
Maybe instead of motions, it should just say find, finds a portion.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
I have one more item of further discussion. The other part that's consistent is that it does add to our affordable housing stock.
Right, it should be in there.
Yeah, I think so too. Rich.
So there's portions that are consistent in that it is located near one fifty six and, you know, that section and adds to our affordable housing stock.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Are we, amend the motion?
Uh, do you, do we withdraw it or just amend it?
Just amend.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to amend the uh my proposal. I I move to find the proposed referral inconsistent with the two thousand nine P O C D for the following reasons, that the site lacks public transportation and is not proximal to the village centers. Mission finds the portions of the proposal consistent such that as easy access to North Briarbrook Road, Route one fifty six and the I ninety five Rocky Neck Connector, and also adds to our affordable housing stock.
I'll second the amended motion.
Any further discussion? Are you sure? All right, let me find my roll call here. Uh How many, I lost it. All right, I'm gonna go. Okay. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Thomas Fitting.
I couldn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mary Salvatore.
Aye.
Tom Fitting.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye.
About Nicole.
Nicole Davidson.
Aye, aye.
Okay, let the, let the record show that the motion carries. Thank you very much for that. I know that was a lot of discussion and um, we definitely gave a good, we gave it a lot of a lot of discussion that I think was useful. Um, so that's it. Uh, I am looking for a motion to adjourn. Did I get cut off? Did somebody mute me? Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Discussion? Okay, let's try, let's try to do a roll call and this time Nicole Davidson.
Aye.
Okay, Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Thomas Fitting.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Mary Salvatore.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Look, uh, let's see, nine fif- nine twenty five, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. That was very good. Thank you.